I would like to call to order the August 20, 2024 meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you kindly call the roll.
Andrej Paradolo.
Present.
Debra Rain.
Present.
Stephen Mayans.
Present.
Will Caronte.
Present.
Patrick Mayfield.
Present.
Gene Marcellus Jr.
Present.
Sam Fish.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Peter Pivko is absent.
Next order of business is approval of the July 16, 2024 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them, or there any changes or corrections? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is the report of the planning staff. Ms. Van.
Board, Angela Van Penning is only administrator. Commission has just approved just one case since your last meeting. And it was ordinance number 510324, which is affordable housing workforce, housing program that the city implemented based on state statute. And if you remember, just a brief overview, that it was a process, we set up three tiers of review, and some middle requirements, two tiers, if it's 100% affordable housing within a certain percentage, that could be relegated to staff review, and then you have the large tier for those who were questioned over exceed 40 units per acre, not 100% workforce housing and/or want more than 25 cent relief. We have another program process for that, but that does require Planning Board approval. Just to quickly understand that the standards we have apply to all of our multifamily districts, all our commercial districts, mixed-use districts, such as deception of C mods, industrial districts in certain areas, military trail, 45th Street, 36th Streets, Georgia Avenue, North or Southern Boulevard. And these new affordable housing and increased density does not imply to single-family zoning, not downtown master plan, any historic district, and a C mod district. That concludes the presentation. Any questions?
Okay, any questions of staff? Thank you so much. Next on our agenda are remarks by the chairperson, of which I have none. Next is the declaration of ex parte communications. Let me begin by saying that I met with the applicant on Planning Board case numbers 1976 and 1976A. Nevertheless, I will base my decision on these applications solely upon the evidence being presented this evening. As to the rest, I have had no ex parte communications, I've received no written communications, I have conducted no investigations, I have made no site visits, and I receive no expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record. Let me start with you, Andrej.
As to the matters presented this evening for the cases presented to us, I have not had any ex parte communications, have not had any received, have not received any written communications, nor have I conducted an investigation or made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record, and my decisions will be based solely on the information presented tonight.
Thank you. Debra.
As to the matters that will be presented this evening, I have not had any ex parte communications, I have not received any written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you.
As to the matter of 1976 and 1976A, I did have a Zoom call with the applicant, but I will base my decisions based on the evidence presented here this evening. As for the rest of the matters, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Pat.
With respect to Planning Board case number 1976 and 1976A, I did participate in a Zoom call with the applicant. That presentation will not impact my decision this evening. It will be based solely upon the testimony presented. With respect to all other agenda items this evening, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Gene.
As to all matters on the agenda, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Sam.
As to Planning Board case 1976, 1976A, I did have a Zoom presentation with the applicant. My decision this evening will be based solely on any evidence presented here. As to all the other matters on the agenda, I've had no ex parte communications, I've received no written communications, I've not conducted an investigation, I've not made any site visits, I've not received any expert opinions. I request these disclosures and all written communication be made part of the record.
Thank you. All right, at this juncture, we now call in the swearing of the speakers. Would everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening please stand up and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful? Thank you. You may be seated. Next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none. That then brings us to Planning Board cases number 1982 and 1983. Mr. Chegus, now is it your preference to do these together or do them separately?
Absolutely together, sir.
If you could state your name for the record.
If you would please, the board, I'd like to combine these applications because they're essentially the same application, the same applicant, and the properties are adjacent to one another.
All right, please state your name for the record.
Brian Chegus, Principal Planner, I Plan and Design, 823 North Olive Avenue.
Thank you.
Members of the board, good evening. Brian Chegus, I Plan and Design, very pleased to be here. I'm here on behalf of my client, Essex Court Holdings LLC. My client's attorney is Morozisca, and my client's civil engineer is Dr. Kevin Bodge, PhD, underwater civil engineer expert. We're here before you for a very simple request, a waiver from Z LDR Code Section 94313A3I to allow for the addition of 105 feet of residential dock for both 5210 Essex Court and 5300 Essex Court. This is the location of the properties along Flagler Drive. Unique properties, they're part of an old plat from the turn of the century where they fronted and they had access from South Olive Avenue by way of Essex Lane, and these four lots at the front, front onto, are the only four that are front onto Flagler, South Flagler Drive. Little bit of history, there are no entitlement histories associated with these two properties. In the mid 50s, modest, single-family homes were constructed on them. This photograph shows those homes, one-story ranch style, typical Florida vernacular. The both properties have been scraped, and they're under development with large, single-family homes today. The property at the bottom, 5300 Essex Lane, has a boat dock that's been in existence for decades. It's, it had suffered significant hurricane damage, probably the last set of hurricanes back in the mid 2000s, and it has a 151-foot dock in existence that's damaged and has not been brought back online or re-permitted. This is that dock as it appears today, looking west, east across the intercoastal, looking south along the seawall. The thrust of our application for both these properties this evening is the existing bathymetric conditions prohibit the establishment of a functionable residential dock within this portion of the intercoastal waterway. The underlying, the mean lower-low water depth through this area is about a half a foot to a foot and a half for the first 100 feet out, and it stays relatively the same out to 200 feet. It's a little deeper, but not, not too much. So out to about 200 feet, it's very unnavigable. The 5210 property to the north has a secondary unique feature. There is some seagrass, very small patch. We're not hanging our hat on that component, but the small patch of seagrass is at that 100-foot distance from the seawall, so if we went to the maximum distance, we would potentially impact that seagrass. 5300 Essex Court, same bathymetrics, but they have that existing 151-foot dock, which shows historically there was some kind of requirement to get out past the seawall for a certain distance, and that's why that dock's been in existence at 151 feet. This diagram I have on the screen right now shows in black what a permitted dock would look like at 100-foot of length off the seawall with a platform at the end and standard boat lifts. The 5210 Essex Court one has a small patch of green, you could see it kind of underneath the, the larger boat lift. That would have, would be impacted if we had gone with a code-compliant dock. The 5300 one is less than what the 151-foot dock historically shows and is in that very shallow water. When you take those away, you can see the new docks basically bypass the seagrasses and get out to the edge of where it becomes more manageable to navigate boats. And that's right on that edge where they are. The next diagram is a contour depth exhibit, shows the same thing, but essentially shows that the docks are the minimum that we need to have to be able to provide at least one of those boat lifts to get into water deep enough to be navigable. The smaller lift is on the inside, it's a little deeper, but the east side of the dock platforms are where the standard boat lift would be located. Again, you take away what's permitted by right, and you see a clean 205-foot dock length to get out to navigable waters. The last part of that is, you know, in using the right materials, using metal grating on the docks themselves, we further accommodate the existing seagrass that's there and possibly future propagation of that grass in the future by making sure the dock's constructed the right way, it's far enough away from it. So those are other positive aspects to providing for the, this enhanced dock condition. Same here, going out past the 151 to get to that edge where we really need to have a little more depth to be able to provide for standard boat. It's important, and we want to convey to the board that longer, longer docks don't mean bigger boats. It means standard of what you see here. These are typical boats along South Flagler today that are moored along the seawall and on docks, and that's who we'd be adhering to as well by way of the code requirements for docks for residential properties. Our stats and our specifications that we provided you show clearly that we're looking for a 24-foot length to 35-foot length capability, nothing larger. So again, longer dock doesn't mean we're going to have ocean-going yachts out there. It's just not allowed. Your staff has indicated that we're in compliance with all of the general use standards of the code, the specific use standards as well. I won't go through them all because we are in compliance with them. More importantly, we're in compliance with the standards applicable to all docks. 19 of those 20 requirements are being met by our application, with the exception of the length, we're asking for this favor, we're asking for this relief to go longer than the 100 feet. But other than that, we have identified, for your knowledge, that we're not the first application. You have had docks come before you, southern part of the city in recent months, in recent years. The ranges of dock lengths that have come before you have been between 125 feet and 191 feet. That's what exists in, between Southern Boulevard and the C-51 canal. We've had seven of our residential neighbors provide letters of support. I think they've been provided to you here tonight, I'm not sure. But we have letters of support from our neighbors, and we believe that we're not setting a precedent by asking for 205 feet because of the unique conditions that are presented at this area of the intercoastal waterway, which I'll show you in the next slide. Our contour map shows that that 205 we're asking for is really the minimum that we need to make this a functionable dock. Every year, Palm Beach County issues, takes aerials for their GIS mapping system, and every year you see the intercoastal waterway as a deep blue color. It's just solid and opaque. But in 2009, when they flew it, this is a 2009 aerial, it must have been caught at mid or lowish tide, and you can clearly see on the photograph on the left, just as anyone knows who is on the intercoastal and is around the Snook Islands, very shallow, at low tide, you can only get in there with a kayak or even a skiff. Well, we have that same condition along the seawall on the west side of the intercoastal. The picture on the right shows it, and if I show this line enhanced, you can see that's, that's that line of where the sediment deposition is very, very heavy and it's very shallow. That 151-foot dock is represented in red there, and they didn't even make it out to the end of that, of that sediment area. So we're asking to get right to the edge of that and be able to provide, be allowed to put in the same size boats as everyone else along the intercoastal. The other part of it is, this lot and seven lots around it have no docks. And you won't find that condition anywhere on the intercoastal from Southern Boulevard to the C-51 canal. This is a very unique situation. Every property to the south of us has a dock, or maybe one lot here or there in between doesn't have one, but there's no seven lots in a row where there's no docks. Why is that? It's prohibitive to be able to have to put a 200-foot dock in. No one wants to spend that kind of money, and it's a long process for approvals. And this unique situation, we're in the middle of it, we have a couple docks to the south of us, as the condition gets better, but there's nothing to the north of us for five lots. That's a telling tale, and we think that the 205-foot is justified because of these specific conditions to what's happening in the, in the intercoastal waterway in the lagoon at this portion of the, of the intercoastal. With that, your planning staff have found these cases, 1982, 1983, consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the LDRs. They've recommended approval for both Class A special use permit applications. We now have seven letters of support from the project, and we're seeking your recommendation of approval tonight for both these cases, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Sam, let's start with you.
So as I understand it, it's, it's the hardship is that within the 200 feet, it's too shallow and there's sediment that makes it difficult to pull boats in general in, or boats of a certain size in?
Yes. The, the, the shallow conditions for clearly almost 200 feet in from seawall out makes navigation very hard for any boat of any size. It'd be, it'd have to be a very small boat. And there are smaller docks to the south, they have less of this condition that we have. It seems to peter out as it fades for itself, but again, no one wants to build a 200-foot-long dock, because it's a very expensive adventure. If they can get a dock 15 feet off the seawall, it's a win-win situation and be able to put in a boat of size.
Okay, is there, I didn't see any applications, or maybe like any kind of recommendation letter from either an engineer or some of the expert in boating, just to...
Yeah. We've submitted full plans and civil engineering plans for these docks. These bathymetric contour depth exhibits are from that civil engineer showing the exact conditions under the water. All of the engineering drawings have been reviewed by staff. I didn't go through all the specific drawings and plans, but they've met all the code requirements for what's necessary for a residential dock.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Gene? Pat? I'm sorry, did you, I thought you said you had no more questions?
No, no more questions.
Okay.
No questions.
Pat? Will?
If you, could you go back to the diagram that you showed, the aerial? Keep going. Yeah, so when you're looking here on the left and you're looking at the curvature of Flagler, if you're going to draw a dotted line from the apex of that curve down, the proposed docks wouldn't protrude past that apex.
Where that red line is on that map, that's as far as our dock would go.
Okay.
So we're actually 700 feet away from the navigable channel.
It sounds like a long space, but it's really nowhere near the water.
Nowhere near.
Nowhere near boating traffic.
Actually, this 2009 aerial is very helpful because it's showing a boat that's in the channel. That's in the navigable channel, and you can see the dock. I have a little, little red line. That's how far out we are. We're nowhere near the navigable channel.
Thanks. Debra, any questions?
No questions.
Andrej.
I have no questions. It's all pretty self.
I have one question, Brian. Can you pull back to the one you had before, the colored map?
The pretty one?
Yeah. I just had a question.
I like that one, too.
Well, it is. So, so to be clear, if you look at the 100-foot mark.
There.
Is it only one and a half feet deep there?
It's, yeah. The, it's very flat, very shallow for 100 feet straight, and it starts to gently go down a bit. But at the 200, you're not at one and a half feet anymore, you're a little bit lower, but where they position the platform, the smaller boat lift is still in shallow water, what's considered shallow water.
It wouldn't get to your knees 100 feet out. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Can we hear from staff, please?
Hello, Valentina Broglia, planner with the city of West Palm Beach. The applicant did a really good job at going over everything, so I won't repeat anything. Did want to go. So staff's recommending, recommendation is approval for Planning Board case number 1982 and Planning Board case number 1983. Based on the findings, it does meet all the standards in the zoning code in section 9436, E3 through 5, section 94313A3 and 4, section 9427A2. And the waiver requested is going to be for 105 feet. The proposed is 205 feet long of a dock where the zoning code only requires 100. And as applicant stated, there were seven letters submitted to staff as of today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? Thank you so much. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? Do you have a card? Susan Morgan, are you here? Please come forward. That'd be fine.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Susan Morgan. I live at 210 Plymouth Road, and I see some of the other neighbors are okay with it. My, my family, my husband's lived there since 1960, and our great neighbor across the street at 5111 South Flagler, Dolores Brombacher, has lived there since 1956. And neither one of us like the idea of an extended dock. Part of us wants to know why they can't just have a regular 100-foot dock, and if they need more, is it, is allowable to dredge any to put the boat in there and to go along with the rest of them? We don't know. If it sets a precedent that might be bad for the rest of the houses to say, oh, he got one, we can get one, you know? It, it obstructs the view from driving up Flagler. You know, my husband lived there before Flagler was even done. It just drifted down to the water. And now it is a lovely drive as you go up there. It sort of winds, there's a very nice walking path. And some of the docks that are further south of us have, I mean, we can just call them floodlights and blue lights along the dock that show up very well at night, which is a good thing for them, but not so much a good thing when you're driving along. You hate to see it almost commercialized, you know? One of the things Dolores was talking about is that the intercoastal is called M95, which is similar to I-95, only it's a waterway made for the boats to go up and down. And it is very narrow. Bingham Island, which is, he showed on, on his map, is almost all underwater except when it is low tide, and it reaches all the way down almost to Forest Hill. And I don't know if you can see this, the light blue is the channel, so it's, it's more on our side than it is near Palm Beach or near Bingham Island. And we're just, we're just worried, it takes a precedence. We, we've been watching them building the houses that they're building there. One is, I heard, 15,000 square feet, and the other one is 16,000 square feet. And it's, you know, we've lived there, I've lived there for 20 years.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Okay.
All right. Would anyone else from the public wish to be heard on this application? And if not, we're bringing it back to the board for discussion. Any thoughts? Anyone have any concerns about these two applications? I mean, to address the ladies' concerns, I think what makes this unique is the, you know, just the low depth here. And your observation was so good because it showed, when you looked at the, you know, it was clear that this was an area that was so much further inland. I mean, the idea you go 100 feet out and only be a foot or foot and a half depth, that's what makes this unique and would arguably not set the precedent because there's not going to be these conditions elsewhere.
Well, and also the ecology of the waterway. I mean, we've seen this on, you know, you probably haven't been here for previous applications, but there have been environmental studies after environmental study about how important the seagrass is to the ecology of the intercoastal waterway. And so to dredge it would do more damage to the intercoastal at the cost of aesthetics than just allowing a dock variance, so.
If no one else has any concerns, I'll be looking for a motion. We'll need two separate motions because we have two applications.
I'll make a motion to approve 1982, case number 1982 and 1983.
I think we need to do them separately, so if we could do one at a time. Is there a suggested motion in our package?
To approve case number 1982.
Is that the language, Mr. Thomas, that you were looking for?
Oh, I guess there's a... That's correct.
In the packet, Andrej, you'll find a suggested motion.
Yes.
That probably goes a little more detail.
There is.
There it is. Anyone else have a...
The pastor?
It's on page 61.
61.
It's usually within the last page of the staff report, provided in the packet.
At the end of the packet, right?
Yeah.
Somebody wants to step in, that's fine.
Okay. You make the motion. I'll load it.
What's that? All right.
Like we don't depend upon you enough, Mr. Thomas.
Okay. So I make, I move that the Planning Board recommend to the city commotion approval of Planning Board case number 1982, a request by Brian Chegus of I Plan and Design on behalf of Essex Court Holdings LLC for a Class A special use permit to construct a 205-foot-long residential dock which exceeds the 100-feet maximum length that the zoning land development and regulations allows at the subject property located at 5210 Essex Court. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted in the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The Planning Board hereby makes findings of fact that the application complies with the required standards in section... in section 9436, E3 through 5, section 94313A3 and section 94273A2 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations.
We have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Andre, how about the next one?
Do the next one as well. Okay. I move that the planning board recommend to the city commission approval of planning board case number 1983. A request by Brian Shagis of I Plan Design on behalf of Essex Court Holdings. Is it the same? Yes.
Yep.
Essex Court Holdings LLC for a Class A special use permit to construct a 205-foot-long residential dock, dock which exceeds the 100-feet maximum length that the zoning land development and regulations allows at the subject property located at 5210. Is it the same address?
No.
5300.
5300, apologies. 5300 Essex Court. The motion is based on the testimony presented at the hearing along with the application submitted in the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The planning board hereby makes findings of fact that the application complies with the required standards in 94 through 66, E3 through 5, section 94313A3 and section 94273A2 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
All right. That then brings us to planning board case number 1624NN. May we hear from the applicant?
Good evening. For the record, Joanie Brickman with Urban Design Studio on behalf of the applicant for Banyan Cay Resort. Let me make this bigger. We'll be here before you tonight to do, request approval of a major amendment to the Banyan Cay CPD/RPD to modify the design guidelines slightly, specifically in regards to the required roof treatment, the screening above the parking deck adjacent to the hotel and to the sign regulations that apply just to the sign out front on Congress Avenue. You're familiar with the site. This is this Banyan Cay CPD/RPD. The northern portion is an I-4 lot RPD, consisting of residents at Banyan Cay with the balance being the golf course, the hotel, and the golf club. This project has a lot of history. I will not read through all this. The reason we are outlining the history really has to do that I started working on this project in 2010. Initially, it was Seapalm Resort, then it changed to Banyan Cay, and now Whitkoff Development Group has now purchased the property and are in the process of rebranding. So not unlike prior owners who are, we are requesting some changes to the design guidelines. Skip through these. Last thing done was in 2021 when Banyan View, the apartment complex, was added into the CPD, and that is constructed and open today. This is the overall site plan of the CPD portion within red, the parking deck that we're going to be speaking of today, which is the subject of the screening request. And they just give, this slide gives you a little bit better view of it in relation to the hotel building and the golf course. So the changes we're making are fairly simple. We had initially requested to switch back to a previously approved trellis design, which this language here in red, by adding the words "or" trellis structures, accomplishes that. Staff preferred to also keep in the prior approval for the shade structures in case that option would ever want to be reconsidered. I can tell you right now, my clients are ready to move forward with constructing the trellis tomorrow. And again, that was previously approved by the city commission. This is the, the prior approval, per se, just exactly the same configuration. You see the landscape around it, the trellis covering all the parking spaces. This is the other option that was previously approved, the sails, and why we do not intend to construct the sail structures. They are being maintained as an option within the design guidelines. The other option, change to the design guidelines is a request to be able to change the project names on the signs out front on Congress Avenue. The project is in the process of being rebranded. That would allow the Banyan Cay to potentially come off. I think there may be just some discussion and, by the public, and I do want to be able to respond to that. But at this point, that is what the request is. The proposed revisions update the last date on the first page. I won't go through all this. It's really just the table of contents, updating some site data on the master plan that was apparently over, that was omitted with the last amendment. Provide the master development plan image. Add the language requiring the shade structure or the trellis be allowed. Add the image of the trellis back into the design guidelines on the upper deck of the parking structure. Add language to not restrict the development's main entrance sign to Banyan Cay Resort and Club. And add the approved resolution number for when Banyan View came in to the history within the design guidelines. The applicant's in agreement with all these conditions in the proposed revisions. The justification request for the trellis code provides for a previously approved screening mechanism and adequate screening for the parking deck, again, previously approved. The request for the change in the sign face entry does not increase the amount of the sign face area or the structure itself. It would simply be a sign face change. This provides you with a view of the current parking deck. You'll see all the pillars that are already installed. That was when the initial developer was proposing to install the trellises. So those are ready to go, engineered so that the trellises can be installed. No changes will be required to that. It also shows you the existing landscape around the front of the parking structure, along the roadway, and a huge tree that was preserved during the construction and development approvals. The hotel's in the back, ready to open as soon as they can possibly get it open. This is the sign out front that we're speaking of. There is one on either side of the entryway on Banyan Cay Drive off of Congress Avenue. And it would just be, the request is to allow for a change to the, the sign face, not to the structure or the design of the structure, just to the sign face area. A major amendment to the Banyan Cay CPD to modify the design guidelines specifically regarding the rooftop screening that is being requested and the sign regulations. We meet all the zoning regulations and staff recommends approval as conditioned. That ends my presentation, just two changes. Again, if there's any public comment, I would appreciate the ability to respond to the comment.
Any questions? Start with you, Andre.
I just have one, as far as the signage. And you're saying that the, the new owner is rebranding. Is it still called Banyan Cay? Because I just saw basically a change of font style as far as the sign goes.
At this point, our original request was to allow for Banyan Cay to be removed from the sign if they rebrand. I, you may have seen an article in the paper, in the Post recently, where the Belgrove is going to be the brand name of the hotel resort and Dutchman Pipe of the private golf course. So we're not sure yet if we're going to replace entire Banyan Cay or potentially just change one of the signs to reference the hotel and the golf club and leave the other one Banyan Cay. But this would, would allow us the ability to change the sign completely.
Right. You're going to have to maintain the same restrictions as far as font height and coverage and everything else. It may change the name, it may not.
It's, the font isn't regulated as much as the sign face area. So yes, we have to comply with code in regards to whatever's going to be placed on that sign face area.
That's all I have.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Deborah.
I'm happy, questions?
Nah.
We had a question. Can you go back to the picture of what the trellis is? Is, is there going to be plants or is it just the structure itself?
There will not be plants.
Okay. My question is, does this provide the, we previously proved it. I don't particularly have an issue with. Just hard to tell from this picture whether it provides any screening at all. That's all I was trying to determine. Because wasn't that the purpose, I remember from a previous time? It was some of the adjoining properties or that were concerned about having to look at cars?
We actually, you're correct, there was landscape on it previously, but it, it was determined that that was not really feasible from an operational and maintenance standpoint. So we actually came in and got approval to remove the landscape. So we are reverting back to the last approval, which is this exact same thing. So the trellises will be screening the cars as you see.
Okay, thank you. All right, may we hear from staff?
Good evening, planning board members. For the record, my name is Kevi DeFrank, senior planner with the city's development services department. And I will be presenting staff's findings and recommendation for planning board case number 1624NN, which is a planned development major amendment request involving the proposed modifications to the Banyan Cay design guidelines and development regulations. I'm not going to reiterate what the applicant's team agent already presented. Therefore, I would like to present that staff finds that the request complies with all the amendment standards found in the section 9432A of the city's zoning and land development regulations. And therefore, staff recommends an approval with conditions of the subject planned development major amendment requests. And here are staff's recommended conditions of approval. I would like to highlight condition 1.7, which states that the proposed modifications to the Banyan Cay design guidelines and development regulations shall include the addition of language not restricting development's main entrance permanent identification signs face content to the Banyan Cay Resort and Golf Club name. And Exhibit C in staff report provided the proposed additional language that states the sign face content shall not be restricted to the Banyan Cay Resort and Golf Club name. And I'd like to clarify that as the applicant's agent already presented, the permanent identification signs currently exist off of North Congress Avenue on Banyan Cay Drive, and that if this request is approved, this will allow the applicant to append or add to the content of the sign face of the existing permanent identification signs. However, as identified, as identified in staff report, if the proposed changes, if any proposed changes results in the removal of the Banyan Cay Resort name, that would require a planned development minor amendment. And that involves a staff-level administrative review process, but does not require a public hearing. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you so much. Any questions of staff?
So just to clarify, as is, there is an allowance for the name change? Or there's not an allowance for the name change?
As of current, uh, there is an allowance for the name change, yes.
All right. Any further questions? Thank you so much.
Yeah, just one question.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Will.
So previously, the, the graphic that they're showing with the landscaping around the parking lot, that was previously a requirement that was then taken away.
Yes.
So it's not a requirement, so the parking garage just sits in that picture that she showed us that had the piles for the trellis pre-built?
Right. But what's currently required is the, the canvas shade fabric structure to screen the top level of the parking garage, not the trellises.
Okay.
Sure we got you covered? All right, thank you so much. I have two cards from people wish to be heard. If there's anyone else who wishes to be heard after I call these two names, please be sure to give a card to the clerk. And that's Steven Joseph and David Bradley. A few folks will come forward. You can take either podium. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Steve Joseph. Steven Joseph. I am a member of the Board of Directors at the residences at Banyan Cay, and my remarks here tonight are representing the residences at Banyan Cay. We're quite concerned about the name change that has been requested here. The residences at Banyan Cay has been in existence since 2018. Ms. Brickman said, mentioned that the Whitman Group, excuse me, the Whitkoff Group, has purchased this development. That's not quite accurate. They have purchased part of the development. The residences at Banyan Cay remain separate and remain branded as the residences at Banyan Cay. Our concern with the request that has been made by the applicant is simply that it gives them carte blanche to change the front of the signage. Yes, they can make changes that then go to a minor, a minor adjustment for the staff to look at. However, what this does is risk the residences at Banyan Cay from losing our identity. It risks the Banyan Cay RPD/CPD of risking its identity. This is a single entryway into the RPD/CPD. So the branding at this entryway is the branding of the RPD/CPD. And so what we have requested is two things. We have requested that the name Banyan Cay is required to be, to remain on any signage. And we believe that all of the entities within the Banyan Cay RPD/CPD be given equal prominence on that signage. One of the things that we do not want to have happen is to have a hotel and golf course, for example, in the equivalent of 72 font, 72-point font, and Banyan Cay is resorted down to 3-point font down at the bottom of that. We have been there since 2018. We've got about $130 million worth of home values there. We simply want equal representation on any signage change that's made at the entryway to the RPD/CPD. That's our request.
Thank you so much. And we have one other speaker. Please come forward. Nice to see you.
David Bradley, I'm speaking on behalf of the board. I'm here as chairman of the legal committee for the, the residences at Banyan Cay. Residents at Banyan Cay is part of a master association, also known as Banyan Cay. We received notice, but the notices are inadequate. It said that the affected area would be outlined in red. Here's an original notice that was sent, and it is not. The, the notices were not sent, and here are three affidavits from three residents from three different sections of Banyan Cay that testify under oath they did not receive notice of this hearing or notice of what the ask was going to be on behalf of Whitkoff. The notice itself on the back is also inadequate in that it says the, the notices for a major amendment to the residential planned development, RPD, commercial planned development, CPD, to modify design guidelines, development regulations specifically regarding the parking and sign regulations. You read that, if you're a layman, and you're saying, well, they're just going to change some parking signs and some parking regulations, and you're not all that concerned about it. It doesn't discuss anything about changing the identity of the sign as it, as it affects coming into our community and retaining our identity. That being said, because there's inadequate notice, because there was inadequate description, and because there was a failure to notify everybody within the community, and these people, by the way, are on the board and would be available to testify, we're asking that you table this and have a continuance until such time as the notice requirements are complied with and that there is an opportunity for a, a better description to be circulated to everybody who should be circulated, noticed to as a matter of law. So we, we put our objection on the record. I'd ask that these three things be, be placed into the record. Do I do that by giving that to the court?
If you don't mind, I'm going to ask you to deliver them to our attorney, but we'll be sure to make them part of the record.
Okay, so. All right. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your consideration.
All right. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard? Before you come, Mr. Thomas, we have to get guidance from you on the legal objection to, to the notice. I don't think our board is in a position to... I don't think our board is in a position to... But you are. Should we try to fix that because this discussion probably needs to be part of the record? If worse comes to worse, Sam, maybe you could let him borrow your microphone or something just while he makes his comments? Or you could come forward, even better.
Yes, sir. We'd ask perhaps that the applicant and staff address the notice provision. We've not evaluated it from a legal perspective. If after they address it, if there are questions and you want us to evaluate it, then we'd have to take a look at it and go back.
Let me ask you this general procedural question. If there was a deficiency in the notice, are we allowed to go forward on this or not?
Notice is required.
Okay, all right.
Sufficiency of notice in terms of a certain distance from the site and things of that type, and staff and the applicant perhaps can address that.
Okay, thank you so much, sir. All right. Now you could come forward.
Mr. Chairman. So I will say on the notice, there are times where you'll have residents that don't receive notice, but notices are sent to the address of record, on public record. So for example, if they, maybe it's not their primary residence or they have a different mailing address, sometimes notice can get sent elsewhere. That's just an instance of something that could happen.
No, that's a helpful point, thank you. Do you want to begin, and then we'll hear from the applicant?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Kevi DeFrank, Senior Planner. For the description on the public notices, it is general, but it is accurate based on what has been presented to staff. The sections of the Design Guidelines and Development Regulations that are being modified are the parking section and the sign regulation sections of the Design Guidelines and Development Regulations. In regards to the notice being sent out to all the residents within 500 feet of the subject application, that is a requirement that has to be followed. And here's a packet of returned envelopes that the address wasn't sufficient, but I'll let the applicant discuss more about it.
Come forward.
Thank you. In regards to, as Kevi indicated, staff prepares the notice, and it was sufficient in regards to what it was being revised in the design guidelines. In regards to the mailers, we take the list off Property Appraiser and do that. There was an oversight in regards to a few mailers that were mailed to Canada. They did get mailed, but there was an oversight with the stuffer. Those people called staff. We have been coordinating with staff. It was determined that we could move forward to Planning Board and that we are required to do another notice 30 days prior to City Commission, which I assure you will be stuffed in every envelope. So the courtesy notice requirement was met. There was just a small oversight. In regards to Mr. Joseph's request about the signage, I have been speaking with Mr. Joseph, and I spoke with my clients today, and I spoke to Angela Jones-Von as well and staff. And we are willing to commit that one of the signs will continue to say Bannion Kay Resort. So that that way, the project identity will still be maintained on the entry into the overall development, and that only one of the signs would be amended to say whatever they end up saying. I mean, they're still in the rebranding process. They don't know what the sign's going to say yet. They wanted to be in a position by changing the design guidelines so that that would be a smoother process. So I guess we can work with staff. I already spoke to Ms. Von prior to City Commission to make sure if any of the language within the design guidelines needs to be tweaked to make clear that one of the signs will reference Bannion Kay Resort. And we are willing to do that.
And when, one of their concerns was not just to reference it, but to give it proper visibility, so it wouldn't be a tiny font or something like that?
Well, it, right now, it does not say the residents at Bannion Kay.
I understand, but Bannion Kay itself, the name Bannion Kay, I think is what they're concerned with.
Oh, well, we would propose not to change that sign at all.
So the one sign would be unchanged?
Yeah, so it would still be the way it looks today. And then the residents do, when you come in the development, they do have an entry sign as well around and roundabout.
Right, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thomas, I just want some guidance from you. Even though we have at least two lawyers on this board, we defer to your expertise on this. If you tell us we're free to go move forward, we will. If you tell us we're not, we'll table it.
And let me ask the applicant, what was the discrepancy that you noticed in the notice? There were some that didn't get sent, did you?
All the envelopes got sent to all the people on the list. There was an oversight on, I think, four or five of them that they weren't stuffed.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Your honor, I'm sorry, I'm used to saying your honor, I'm sorry. We use the list from the Property Appraiser's office, and we have to sign an affidavit, and we supply the list to the city staff as well. So what we got from the Property Appraiser's office was mailed out to everyone.
And when you say they weren't stuffed, what does that mean?
The insert was left out, I think, of four and five of them.
So just to make the envelope?
Yes, yes. And they will be re-noticed again before this goes to City Commission.
So Mr. Chairman, what you have is that, of course, you'll be making a recommendation.
I'm so sorry.
You'll be making a recommendation. And there is an opportunity for them to receive adequate notice before City Commission. We could perhaps ask the gentleman if that would be sufficient for their purposes. But if not, in the technical sense, we are required to give notice to everyone within 500 feet. And if we don't technically, we perhaps should reschedule it. But nonetheless, there is an opportunity that they'll be able to present to City Commission, and that's where the final decision would be made anyway.
I understand. Mr. Green, you want to weigh in on this?
Rick Green, Development Services Director. I just wanted to mention also, because it's a major amendment, there would be two hearings before the City Commission. And I personally, I know I got a call from a nice gentleman from Canada who told me he got the notice. When he told me his address, I realized it was for this case, so I described to him. And I think Angela got another call.
So I just want to be just clear. Is it your opinion that we can move forward? Or is your opinion that we need their consent to move forward? Or I'm not clear how we're leaving this?
I would inquire if they would be satisfied with moving forward since it's going to City Commission, and there'll be two hearings before City Commission where their opinions can be expressed.
At the end of the day, at the end of the day, whether they're satisfied or not, if it's a legal requirement, have we met it or not? That's my question.
I would think it's adequate. Technically, I would suggest that if you're concerned about it, that you delay and have it come back after notice has been given properly. That way, there can be no objections based on the action here at this board.
So I'm going to give you a chance to come forward. I think Mr. Thomas is asking you, since this is going to go before the City Commission, and notice will be given, whether that would be a satisfactory resolution for your residents or not?
We disagree that there was notice given to the majority of people. We absolutely disagree with that. We did a survey of our community, and everybody on the bellflower cul-de-sac, everybody on the cul-de-sac up from that half of, or safflower cul-de-sac, everybody on certain sections of Jim Berry Way, which is the long stretch within the community, had no notice of it, period. Much less the inadequacy that we have complained about in the description saying it's just about parking and signage, not about our identity. So we would like, we maintain our objection. We'd like everybody to have notice. And then let people have an opportunity to be heard, because that's why notice is required. That's the spirit and letter of the law.
Thank you. Ms. Brickman, I'll give you a chance. I'm sorry, ma'am, the public comment's over. Ms. Brickman, if you want to come forward? What are your thoughts on this before we make a decision?
Well, I guess my thoughts would be that obviously, every one in the community is aware of this project. It was an oversight. I'm not saying that for the ones to Canada that weren't stuffed. However, we have to rely upon the Property Appraiser's office to...
Do we have proof that we mailed to everyone on the Property Appraiser's list?
We mailed to everyone on the Property Appraiser's list. We had to sign an affidavit. The ones that are returned are returned because the addresses provided by the Property Appraiser's office are no longer valid. Even, 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 either the people moved or they're not, I don't know. But there's nothing else we can rely upon except the property appraisers.
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Chairman. So is the issue with the address or the issue that certain envelopes weren't stuffed? And when we say they weren't stuffed, they were missing the pertinent information? If they were missing the pertinent information, then I, it's, just as a layperson...
You're not quite a layperson. You remember the Florida bar, but go ahead.
There's no sufficient notice. As to the language, I don't object to the language.
I personally don't have an issue with the language either, respectfully. I am concerned about the notice. Do we, though, just to break it down, and Jean, thank you, those are helpful comments. As a matter of law, does the applicant have the right to rely on the property appraisal addresses?
Yes.
Okay, so their reliance on the property appraisal addresses, whether they reach the people or not, is not the issue?
That is correct.
Okay.
The question is whether there are people who were not notified, and that's what...
Yeah, I want to be, when you say not notified, were these people who didn't get, weren't mailed to the property appraiser address? Or these are people who, we have to separate out whether they actually got notice versus whether they were properly mailed to the addresses that the applicant has the right to rely on?
And we don't know. Given that, the safer result would be to reschedule and assure that notices are sent.
Ms. Brickman, what are your thoughts on this, then? You're hearing, you're hearing our attorney saying maybe the safer course...
I understand and respect the attorney's position. The issue is, if we have to do another mailer, it's going to be the same exact mailer.
Well, perhaps you may get some...
But the issue, the issue was that five of the envelopes were missing.
I'm so sorry, what a time, go ahead, Pat.
The issue, I understand you follow the property appraisers list, and I'm very familiar with that process, working in the city myself. The issue is that five of the envelopes were missing information.
Five of them, yes, from what I understand, in Canada.
I think that that suggests that notice was not met, requirement of notice was not met.
Is that your thought as well, Jean? Because I think you made the same point.
Yeah, I think, I think the property appraiser conversation should be over. It's whether or not the content of the letters were present, were sufficient. And if some of them were empty, then, you know, they could always go to the City Commission and say, hey, this shouldn't even be before the City Commission because we kind of skipped a step, so...
Any thoughts on this side of the table? Deborah?
Yeah, I believe if the contents are actually missing from the envelope, then, you know, that's failure to notify.
Andre?
Yeah, I think the contents and the fact that this gentleman that spoke just about in support of the community, that he's saying that there's a whole side of the street that wasn't notified. I don't know if those residents fall within the circumference of the notice that needed to be sent to them. So I don't know that, but that's concerning, for sure. So yeah, I think the fact that they, some people just didn't get mailers or got empty envelopes is a reason to redistribute that and also confirm the addresses that are not correct as well, somehow.
Let me see if I can summarize what I think the consensus of our board is. I think we're uncomfortable to go forward, given that some of the notices were insufficient. I have sympathy with the applicant, that she has a right to rely on the property appraiser addresses. I'm going to suggest to you, sir, that perhaps you can work with her and make sure that you have your list that she could check with so when this is re-noticed, there's no issue as to whether these are going to the correct addresses or not. Something to supplement maybe the property appraisal, so we can eliminate this as an issue.
I will be happy to send her a list of the addresses of everybody in the community, all the people who are...
I think, I think that would be very helpful, even though it's not necessarily required. And with that, Sam, do you want to add?
I wanted to get off the notice issue for just a second. The applicant did mention a compromise of leaving one of the signs to reference the Bannion Kay name to stay permanent. Is that something that is at all amenable to the neighborhood? Or is that something that?
Yeah, I don't think we want to mediate this right now, but I think it is helpful to be able to say, though, that's something you want to address when you come back to us, and hopefully those issues will have been worked out. So, do you want to say something?
And I do want to say, so, to the applicant, this probably amounts to a delay tactic because we're going to end up in the same position. However, just to comply with the requirements, I think notice needs to be properly given.
I don't think we have discretion. If there is a notice deficiency, I think that's like jurisdictional almost as far as our ability to move forward on this application. So therefore, I don't think we have a choice. If there's a deficiency in the notice, we're not allowed to consider it. So therefore, I think we have a way to address it because we're going to get cooperation from them, not only to fulfill the letter, but also the spirit of the notice required to be sure they go to everyone. Just finish my thoughts, I promise. So, I'm sorry, why don't you go ahead?
Well, no, what I was going to say is, you know, so they're going to have to do the re-notice. Beyond just making sure that you're providing them with the list of your residents, I would encourage you guys to use this time to come up with a plan for how you want that signage to identify your community so that when the applicant comes back, they can present something that, you know, there is some agreement upon.
Well, I understand, it may still be the applicant's call, but this would be the right time to see if you can work out a mutually agreeable compromise with respect to it.
We would want to, and we do want to, and we will.
So you got to get to the mic, you got to get to the mic if you're going to talk.
I'm sorry.
We do want to do that, and we will do that. We want to cooperate, we want to be good neighbors, and we want to find a solution that is beneficial to everybody and to come back to the commission as a community with an idea.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Van, do you want to add something?
Just wanted to point out two things, that four of the five envelopes that were returned empty, people did call us, and they were sent the notice, so they did get the notice. We sent them, emailed them the notice, and we actually told them over the phone exactly what the case was. So those people did get noticed. Those are the only ones, there was five that we did receive comments from, and of those, we staffed...
Ms. Van, respectfully, we know of four or five that didn't have...
That's all the ones that sent it, yes.
Are we sure, do we know for certain?
I have no idea. Just letting you know, the ones who notified staff, the ones who notified staff...
I understand, that's not my question, though.
Staff did, in effect, make sure that they knew what the case was about. Some we sent the...
Ms. Van, I'm asking a different question. I'm asking a different question.
I understand, no, I don't know the rest of them. I'm just letting you know, the four that we got back, four to five, we told them exactly what it was.
I understand that.
Just want to put it on the record.
Alls we know is the mailing went out, and we know of at least five that were deficient.
Correct.
That could have been 50 deficient, but we know of five that were...
Five. And second thing is, I understand, we can work with the HOA code requires we get our mailers from the property appraiser office. We must get whatever's unfilled at the property appraiser's office. So we can work with them, but we ultimately has to come from the property appraiser's office.
I think Jean put it very well. He said, at the end of the day, this isn't about, I think the other one who said it, Jean, it isn't about the addresses, it's about what was in the envelopes. And that, and that we know of at least five that were deficient, notwithstanding the fact that they were largely corrected. Anyway... Were we looking at a continuance? Am I summarizing the view of this board as one who feels differently? Let me say it differently. Would anyone be comfortable moving forward with the application at this point? No. And if not, then I'm looking for a motion to table. I'll make a motion to continue. Okay, we have a motion, have we a second?
Second.
Would you make that to a time, certainly?
I think to the next meeting? Would that be sufficient time to get the notices out for our next meeting?
Yes, they only require, I think, 14 or 15 days.
Okay, we'll see you next month.
Which is the date, I think we have to say the date?
It'll be our, it'll be our September meeting.
And we would appreciate, I'll get your card. We would like to understand if there's really any issues because I think our proposal tonight to leave Bannion Kay on is really not changing anything, so...
I want to be clear, you have a right to send it to everyone on the property appraiser list. However, if you're being given the opportunity to have additional addresses, we would obviously encourage you to use those.
We'll consider that.
We don't want to be back here and have the same issue come up, so I hope you'll consider it favorably. All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passage unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that then brings us to Planning Board Case 1976 and 1976A.
Good evening. My name's John Roach, I'm in in-house.
Good evening, my name's John Roach, I'm an in-house certified urban planner with the Gunster Law Firm here in West Palm Beach. And this evening, we're excited about this opportunity to bring before you a new development, an additional new development proposed within the Currys mixed-use district. With me today on the development team is Victor Scala, Victor is the Vice President of Development at Savannah. As a company, Savannah's been in real estate for over thirty years and has an office here in West Palm Beach, which is actually just a short walk from the site that we'll be discussing. With over two million square feet of development underway, they are the developer of the Alara project, which came before you in December twenty twenty-two, and they are in the early stages of construction with that project. In addition, we have Brian Seymour, who's a land use attorney and colleague at Gunster, Peter Stromberg, who's an architect and partner at Garcia Stromberg, which is a thirty-five-plus-year-old local architecture firm. And then we also have Brian Kelly, a traffic engineer at Simmons and White, and Greg Wilfong, civil engineer with Kemley Horn. Our application before you this evening is a two-part request. The first is a level-three special review, which does include variances, and then the second is a request to abandon a fifteen-foot-wide alleyway that runs adjacent to the south side of our property. As you may recall, the C MUD regulations do provide the planning board with the authority to grant all site plan approvals, as well as variances within the mixed-use districts. And you are also required to make recommendations to the city commission in regards to applications for abandements. The site before you this evening is located at the southeast corner of Pine Street and North Dixie Highway. It consists of nine parcels that total one point four acres. It also includes a four hundred and eighty-seven-foot, plus or minus, long alleyway that is fifteen feet wide. It runs along the south side of our property, you can see outlined here. It totals approximately point one seven acres. These were dedicated in nineteen twelve, and the alley currently dead ends at our eastern end of our property, as the Temple Israel property, which is located east of us, has already abandoned portions of the alleyway as well. Currently, the alley is gated at Dixie Highway, it's overgrown in various areas, and does not provide any access other than to our sites, again, running immediately north of the alley. There are some utilities within the alley, these will all be addressed as part of redevelopment of the site through relocation and/or easements. The site is currently within the Curry mixed-use district, specifically the transition sub-district. The intent of C MUD, as you're well aware, is a compact pedestrian-oriented mixed-use district. It provides for a connection between Curry Park to the east along Flagler Drive and Northwood Village along North Dixie Highway to the west. Specifically, the transition district is smaller parcels, they were intended to provide just that, a transition from the core properties located along Flagler Drive with the taller building heights, the edge sub-district, which is further north, as well as the general commercial multifamily designations located west of North Dixie Highway. We are proposing to redevelop the site with a mixed-use building consisting of three hundred and sixty-seven multifamily units. Approximately seventy-four hundred square feet of ground-floor commercial spaces, commercial space will also be provided. And then there's over twenty-eight hundred square feet of resident-only co-working space, as well as residential amenities located on the ground floor. All of these uses will be accommodated with over four hundred parking spaces that will be located within a multi-level parking structure. The building consists of two components. The bold black outline that you see here, which is the biggest part of the building, is the podium, that is a five-story podium. And then on top of that would be two eleven-story residential towers. So the overall height of the building would be sixteen stories, or a hundred and sixty-three feet in height, and this is consistent with the provisions of the C MUD transition district. Instead of one continuous podium, podium, and one residential tower across the entire site, we've proposed to break up the building, to visually divide the mass of the structure into two components that are approximately two hundred feet from east to west. However, to provide the efficiency and the design of the parking garage, reduce the number of access points, vehicular circulation, and so forth, the two components would be proposed to be joined at the podium level, so levels one through five. By this connection, the sixty-foot connection, providing for one continuous floor plate of the parking garage. In order to maintain this division of the massing, the sixty-foot-wide section would be recessed from the frontage of the building to over thirty feet. This also creates a nice space for the introduction of landscaping inside of an open plaza. This would be designated as public open space and serves as a, as a main entry into the residential lobby. The sixty-foot segment also corresponds with the required tower separation that is required by the code. The building elements of heights, setbacks, and building placement provided, comply with the provisions of the C MUD regulations. And while we knew the natural path of the sun would only cast shadows to the north, with the exception of the very early morning and very late evening of the summer solstice, which is approximately June thirtieth, we did put together a quick shadow study, which you can see here, indicate that this is June twenty-first. The time, as the video progresses, will be displayed at the top of the screen here, so this is seven-thirty in the morning. You'll see that as it progresses through the morning, those shadows start to creep their way to the north, to the point at which they are completely in line with our property by ten a.m., and then continue that way throughout the day until the later evening hours, in which then they start to proceed to the south as well. The properties to the north are owned by the applicant. The property to the east that would be impacted is the Temple Israel site, which is proposed for redevelopment. The height of the core district allows for a three-hundred-foot-plus tall building, which is one and a half, approximately one and a half, nearly two times of what we are proposing. So we feel like, from a shadow perspective, and the fact that we comply with the C MUD regulations, that this is a compatible design and fits in with the intent of the C MUD district. A significant amount of effort was put into the building placement and design of the public realm. Along the road frontages, the sidewalks are all being pulled away from the curb line, landscaping will be added to buffer pedestrians from the vehicular traffic. And heavy landscaping, as you can see along Pine Street and Dixie Highway, will be installed to offer substantial shade and character to these street frontages. The street trees within here will be approximately, are at a minimum of twenty feet in height. This is about one and a half times what you would normally see at time of installation for shade trees. So the intent is to create that immediate effect along those frontages. The ground floor of the building is recessed from the upper levels of the podium. This increases the size of the pedestrian space on the ground floor, and increases the width of the walkway, and creates an overhang for these commercial uses, as I mentioned, that are on the ground floor. Benches, tables, chairs, bike racks, and so forth will all be arranged throughout the space. The public realm then seamlessly integrates into our active uses on the ground floor, which are shaded in blue. These are urban storefronts, commercial spaces, could be retail, could be restaurant, could be office, and so forth. There would be multiple pedestrian entrances off of these public walkways, as you can see within the blue arrows. And there's approximately five hundred linear feet of uninterrupted pedestrian space along Dixie and Pine that is being created as a result. The primary vehicular access into the project is here in the northeast corner of the site. This is a, Pine Street is a tertiary street, the third level of the street hierarchy that is outlined within C MUD. The intent was to get this traffic away from the North Dixie Highway corridor, and specifically the intersection, to reduce and eliminate conflicts with those turning movements, and to minimize the amount of traffic that would come in and out of Dixie, which is, everyone was aware, a very busy commercial corridor. Residents, guests, most commercial patrons would utilize this main access in the northeast corner, accessing the upper levels of the parking garage. What this does is provides for the back-of-house, in essence, what we would normally have within an alleyway, we are internalizing into the building, and we do have an ingress-only into that service area off of Dixie. Again, this is entrance-only, it would only provide access to loading, trash pickup, dumpster enclosures, things, deliveries, things like that. There are a handful of parking spots that commercial tenants, employees, and so forth could park in, but those number of spaces are minimal. And then that traffic would exit out on the Pine Street, where they could then proceed to Dixie Highway or Flagler Drive. And that's near the, the primary entrance. By consolidating these entrances, we allow for that continuous public realm and pedestrian connection that I described previously. In our landscape design, we also looked at how the project interacts and integrates into the existing development, specifically along our south property line, where you have Flagler Point, which is a mid-rise courtyard buildings, but they have substantial existing landscaping along their north property line, which is our south. Those shade trees are pretty significant in size, provide a lot of screening within there, and we don't necessarily want to compete with that space. So rather than put in the large shade trees that we would normally do immediately next to those trees, we'd prefer to focus our landscaping up against the facade of the garage, fill in the gaps that do exist, and allow that existing landscaping to continue to grow and mature, and maximize their, maximize their effectiveness. In addition, we will install shade trees along our east property line, and again, within those gaps. As mentioned previously, the focus of the public realm, breaking up the massing of the building with the recess, allows us to create this designated public plaza here, it's approximately fifty-one hundred square feet. As I'll talk in a minute, that plays into our C MUD incentives that we're proposing to implement. In addition, we do have a small segment here where we've recessed the building at the corner of the intersection, creates for a nice small, small public plaza in that area, allows for outdoor seating and so forth, and is also a key component in terms of the visibility triangle of Dixie Highway, and creating that character and that prominence on that corner. The public open space is a component of our selected incentives. As you know, C MUD has an à la carte menu, in which to implement the heights that are allowed within the district, you can choose from the menu of options. We will utilize the public open space, again, we're over fifty-one hundred square feet, the code only requires forty-eight hundred. In addition to that, we will implement LEED certification in the development of the project, and we will contribute four hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the Curry Park improvements, whether that be construction, maintenance, and so forth. The image before you is a little bit of a misnomer, because it's not necessarily how you would experience the building, you know, but I want to put it in here, because it does show, show an overall image of the, of the project. You can see within this image, though, how we've really focused on the frontages of the building, this specifically being Pine Street, how we've pulled the sidewalks back, we've installed the, the landscape area with the large shade trees along the street frontage. We have a couple on-street, short-term parking spots that would be metered. We have the public open space here in the middle, it doesn't read the best in here, but it will in other images. This is that thirty-foot recess that is about sixty feet wide, really breaks up the massing of the building, if you were to look east to west along the project. And then you see the two tower components with the sixty-foot separation there. Again, the entire ground floor, or pretty much the entire ground floor of Pine Street and almost all of Dixie Highway is non-residential use, active uses, that interact with that public sidewalk, have those pedestrian circulation and access points. This image is more representative at a pedestrian level, this is as if you were on the north side of Pine Street. You can see that recess in the middle podium that breaks up the, the building into the smaller components, creates that public open plaza, and separates the residential units above. While Pine Street is a tertiary street, according to the seamless classification, we felt it was important to place emphasis on the ground-floor active uses and their integration with that public realm. Ground-floor active use is not a requirement on tertiary streets, but we felt like it was important to activate this space and include those non-residential uses in those locations. Here you can see where the building starts to wrap around. This is where it starts to integrate into the Dixie Highway frontage, where we completely have active uses on the ground floor, as well as the upper level units, or excuse me, upper levels of the podium. This is a primary street, so those ground-floor uses will continue around the corner. Residential units were also placed, placed on the podium levels above, and they do partially wrap around Pine Street. Unfortunately, as a result of Dixie Highway being a state highway, we were limited with the amount of landscape that we could be, that could be installed within the rideaway. So actually, a part of working with staff over quite a few months was redesign of this Dixie Highway facade to create this overhang area, so we actually pushed the building back on the lower levels of the podium. And this allowed us to install the shade trees on our side of the sidewalk, at the, at the additional height, the twenty-foot height, that will allow them to overhang into that pedestrian sidewalk and provide that shade that would normally be provided if you were, if you were placing them between the sidewalk and the curb. So we feel like we're, through the redesign of this facade, we were able to achieve the objective of the C MUD and the street tree requirement. So this is continuing around, this is Dixie Highway frontage, again, the ground floor non-residential, the residential units on the podium, and then the tower portion above. These are just a series of images, I won't go through every one of them. There is a few were within the various spaces that I've described previously. Excuse me, the four here are, are along Pine Street. This upper right-hand corner is within the public plaza. And then these are representation of the Dixie Highway frontage that I was talking about before. As I'm sure you remember, C MUD regulations were revised to require new development to be reviewed by the planning board, and as part of that process, it did recognize that there was flexibility that would be needed within the regulations to address specific instances or specific sites, and it gave the planning board the authority to grant those. We do have, as part of this project, we are requesting four variances or waivers from those regulations. The first is in relation to the habitable space liner that's required along the entire frontage of the parking garage. As I mentioned, Dixie Highway is a primary street, does require ground-floor non-residential active uses. It also requires active uses along entire parking garage on the upper levels. Those ground-floor uses are, are not required on the ground, excuse me, those non-residential uses are not required on the ground floor on Pine Street, but the code, because it says that all parking garages have to be lined by habitable use, would require such a use on the upper levels. So on the ground floor, you could have a blank wall, no active use behind it, but the upper levels, where you have the parking garage, you do have to have an active use in front of that building, or in, in front of those floors. What we looked at was, because Dixie Highway is the most important street frontage, we felt it was imperative to include those active uses, not only on the ground floor, but also the upper levels, as you can see here outlined in blue. However, along Pine Street, where we do have the parking levels within the podium, levels two through five, we are requesting a variance from the required habitable space liner units. The depth of those units, the code requires, I think, only fifteen to twenty. However, by the time you factor in accessways, egress, and so forth, takes up a substantially larger amount of space. So if we were to carry these liner units across the Pine Street frontage, you would actually consume the entire space that is outlined and shaded in red here. That takes up nearly half of our entire parking garage, and makes the rest of the parking garage, wouldn't be feasible to achieve circulation within that space. So the depth of the lots, the configuration of the site, pretty much renders the site useless, or, or would have no ability to construct a decent parking garage if we were to provide liner units across our entire Pine Street frontage. So we decided to focus that active use to the ground level, where you have the pedestrian activity, the interaction with the public realm, and instead, treat the upper levels of the podium with architectural treatments that would screen the parking and create a visual or an aesthetic appearance, as opposed to having an active use within that space. In terms of how we would treat that frontage, or that facade, here you see some snippets of various design elements that we would utilize. Within these larger portions, you know, what's labeled number two here on the facade, on the Pine Street facade, that would be perforated metal, like what you see on the image to the left. These other ones that are labeled number one would be actually an artistic assemblage of fabric panels that you could have in various colors, various patterns. They could be artistic images and so forth, that would fit within the, the structural frame that is created by the parking garage itself. So these are kind of detailed components, but we feel like it really shows up best within these renderings here. You can see the active use wrapping around from Dixie Highway on the Pine Street on the corner here, but then on the remainder of the Pine Street. the corner here, but then on the remainder of the Pine Street frontage, you have those perforated panels, you have the frame structure of the garage itself, you have the fabric panels within it that could be various colors and things like that. But you can see how that architecturally and artistically screens the parking that is behind it, even though there is not an actual active use within that space. Again, the image on the right, a lot of emphasis was placed on that ground floor interaction with the public realm as opposed to having the units on the upper levels. This is just an overall. We feel like the previous ones are more of a realistic image, but this is just kind of an overall as to how that integrates into the entire Pine Street frontage and how those components would relate to each other. The second variance is with regards to the building length. As I discussed previously, the property is nearly 500 feet in length. The CMUD regulations currently limit buildings to a maximum of 250. So what we tried to do was create two separate and distinct, rather than create two separate and distinct buildings, we've looked to break up the massing of one singular building as we felt like two separate buildings would create a lot of inefficiencies and actually result in a more inappropriate development for the site and for CMUD. If you were to separate these buildings into 200 foot segments, you would have twice as many driveways, you would have twice as many service accesses, twice as many dumpster locations, you know, everything would be duplicating. By providing one common floor plate that allows us to access the entire parking garage, we can consolidate those into singular access points like I talked about along Pine Street, have that entire back of house and so forth. So we really feel like shortening, or excuse me, consolidating the building but breaking up its massing through the 60-foot wide recess creates the appearance and meets the intent of the CMUD regulations, but really allows us to achieve the efficiencies and result in a more desirable development. So as I talked about, you know, you have the 30-foot recess, 60 feet wide. This results in two components that are just over 200 feet, and again, we feel like this meets the intent of the CMUD regulations. The third variance is with regards to landscape buffer in the northeast corner here. We comply with our landscaping throughout the site with the exception of this area where the city has requested that we relocate all of our utilities. So this is where all of our services will come in. Utilities serving other properties will actually come through this area. So this area, because of the underground aspects to those utilities, we couldn't install the shade trees that are required. We focused those shade trees along the primary aspects of our building facade here, but in this area where the underground portion is, we focused all of our landscaping to the backflow preventers, the meters and things like that, and screening those. So while it's not a shade tree, we will have landscaping within there that adequately screens those undesirable components that you often see. The fourth variance is with regards to separation of access points. I talked about the primary entrance and exit in the northeast corner of the site as well as the egress of the ground floor back of house or service area. In order to consolidate those into one area, we felt like the egress only was actually a very small amount of traffic, wouldn't create any conflicts with regards to the primary entrance or exit, but the city does require that there be 125 feet of separation between access points. We're proposing 37 feet 2 inches, so therefore, we're asking for the variance. However, we feel like there's sufficient space and the traffic engineers, both our engineer as well as the city's, has agreed that that is sufficient space for pedestrian refuge, that they're not getting stuck between two driveways, and that the low-turning movements would not create any safety concerns or conflicts between those two. So we feel like that that is more than sufficient spacing given the unique circumstances and the characteristics of the specific driveways themselves. So that's it for the standards. It's our opinion that the application's before you comply with all the applicable standards within the city zoning code and as we've outlined this evening and was contained within your justification, our justification that was a part of your package. We're excited about the opportunity to bring the project, another project within the Curry Mixed District to fruition. We feel like it further implements the vision of the district. We have reviewed staff's recommendation, and we appreciate their support, their recommendation of approval. We don't have any objection to the conditions of approval that were contained within there. However, we did submit to staff some suggestions to clarify some of the timing of those conditions. So we did submit those to staff. I'm happy to discuss those after staff's presentation if it comes up as necessary, but otherwise, we appreciate your time this evening, and myself and the team are certainly happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions of staff? Sam, I'll start with you. Gene?
Sure. What was the height of the podium?
So the height of the podium is five floors.
Five floors, okay.
Yeah. Ground floor, active use on both street frontages, the back of house behind that, and then levels two through five would be parking, except on Dixie Highway where we would have residential units on those levels.
I have one question on the parking screens, the building screening. What is the dimensional depth of those perforated metal panels or fabric panels?
I don't have the exact dimension. I believe it's approximately two to three feet as far as the recess in the frame before those panels are. So you have your architectural frame within the structure, right?
Peter Aziz.
Okay.
Hi, Peter Stromberg, Garcia Stromberg Architects. What we will do with those panels, we're doing a similar design on Pier 66 in Lauderdale. They'll probably be about two to three feet in depth, each one of them, and we'll vary them. So we'll get depth, we'll not only vary the design articulated vertically, but depth-wise. And then some of those will have metal perforated panels in it with small enough perforations so we won't get a lot of light bleed from the cars. And then the other ones will actually have fabric panels, which will actually take from, and I think you saw on the cover that John had presented, will actually design some of the paintings that we did for the project, will pick those colors in there between a lot of these blues and greens and create an articulation in there, but it will create a good depth between two and three feet along those facades.
Okay, thanks.
Will?
So John, if I understand correctly, the alley that's being abandoned is going to be basically strictly a landscape and space buffer, right? And all of the internal, all of the trash loading zone, those types of uses are inside the pedestal or the podium?
Correct. The alleyway itself currently is 15 feet wide as dedicated. It's less than that from a visual perspective because it's overgrown and so forth. We are proposing to landscape 10 feet of that, so there would be 10 feet between our podium and the new south property line. They would be completely landscaped against the facade of our building, the shade trees and so forth. And then all of that back of house that you just described, yes, would be within the building on that ground floor. So there would be no outside dumpsters, there would be no outside loading zones, there would be no outside service areas, and there would be a handful of parking spots as well for the commercial employees and tenants.
Okay, so there'd be no ever smells or daily noises for?
Everything is within the structure.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Thank you. Deborah, any questions?
One clarification. There was just one main entrance for the residents, as I think I saw on there where you showed the?
Correct.
Right over here, and the service entrance, while that comes in from a different location, the exit, there it is.
Yeah.
Okay, the exit is, runs parallel to the entrance and exit for the residents.
Correct.
You have another one that shows where the arrows come in. You may want to?
Yeah, I can go back to the one that actually shows the circulation through the ground floor. Just one second. So this one, the back of house comes in off of Dixie. Services, you know, the trash loading zones, handful of parking spots, more trash and so forth, then exits here. Again, you know, the engineers have agreed that the number of vehicles that would be utilizing this exit, given the nature of the back of house, would be very minimal. And then all of the other traffic, you know, all of your residents, your commercial users, your guests, and everybody would be using this one entrance into the parking garage.
But that's going up a level?
That immediately goes up to level number two.
Okay.
And then you would ramp up to three, four, and five.
Thank you.
Andre, any questions?
I did have a question. First of all, it looks like you're complying with the amount of trees and shrubs and everything else that's required, but are you in compliance with the area of landscape? Because it seems?
Correct, yes. In terms of landscaping and the requirements of CMUD and what's, you know, provided for within that urban mixed-use district, yes.
Okay.
The only area that we have that gap that I talked about, the variance, is here in the northeast corner of the site where the utilities.
And I'm curious, the diagram that you have that shows the street frontage non-residential to be activated, I'm just wondering if that, you're showing Pine Street at nothing, and I'm just wondering, is there no opportunity to tuck in a space or two of some kind of non-residential use? Or is it just a blanket? We're going to ask for the whole variance of the whole frontage.
On the ground floor or on the upper levels?
On the ground floor.
The ground floor is, everything you see shaded in blue here is active use.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at?
So our entire, almost our entire Pine Street frontage?
Got it.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Any other questions?
Just one follow-up to what Andre had said about landscaping. Is there elevated landscaping, like above of the podium level? Like a lot of the apartment buildings now, they're doing like landscape at the pool deck and that kind of thing, so?
Yeah, on top of the podium level is residential amenities. There's a swimming pool and everything like that between the towers. You can kind of see it shaded out here.
But there's additional landscaping?
There's landscaping up there as well. Yeah.
All right, thank you so much. May we hear from staff?
All right, good day, everyone. Jeremy Swaby, Planning and Zoning Senior Planner for the record. Just a reminder that the approval for the Level 3 special review, the variances will be done by the planning board, and the board would also vote for recommendation to the City Commission for the right-of-way abandonment. All right, so the applicant is requesting a Level 3 site plan review pursuant of Section 9455B of the Zoning and Land Development Regulations. The requirement to provide a proposed development includes height bonuses permitted within the CMUD district, and they are seeking approval of the variances and right-of-way abandonment as well. As mentioned by the applicant, they are seeking to utilize three height incentives shown, which is the lead goal certification, the public open space, and improvement to Curry Park to obtain the additional 78 feet in height, and the total height would be 163 feet, which is the maximum height permitted in the transition sub-district. Staff has evaluated the four variance requests and has determined that they comply with the standards found in Section 9438D6. Also, the project has been analyzed and has been found to satisfy the four-level special review standards found in Section 9455B2. The applicant is also seeking a right-of-way abandonment, and applicant is proposing the abandonment for an existing 15-foot alley, which totals 7,534 square feet. Staff has evaluated the request and has determined that it complies with the abandonment standards found in the Code of Ordinances, and staff is recommending approval for this. The Plans and Plot Review Committee has reviewed the application and has deemed the application sufficient for public hearing. The traffic concurrency letter was issued on July 15, 2024, and the school concurrency on November 30, 2023. For public notice, mailers went out to all property owners within 500 feet of the property with the 14-day notice requirement, and advertisement placed in the Palm Beach Post with 10-day notice requirement in addition to the signed posting. Therefore, staff is recommending approval with conditions of Planning Board Case Number 1976, and also recommending approval with conditions of the proposed right-of-way abandonment, Planning Board Case Number 1976A. And the conditions for the special review and abandonment are provided in Page 2 and 3 of the staff report. That's it.
Okay, any questions of staff? Let me start on this side. Andre?
I have no questions.
Deborah?
I have no questions.
Will? Of staff? I don't know what your question is. So I asked and I have no idea.
So this was submitted and left to us, requesting certain assurances from the property owner regarding, you know, dirt and dust control and that kind of stuff. Is that something that you take this under consideration and speak with the property owner about? Like, what's the process for that?
Yeah, so that request, that is something that is dealt with during the pre-construction meeting with the building department.
Okay.
That's not normal, what we would be doing, but it's fair to risk. Go ahead. All right, any other questions? Patrick?
Do you or the applicant have any representation of the south facade of the building?
Of the?
The south facade of the building? Is that in any of the images?
I can answer if you want.
Okay.
Mr. Mayfield, we do not, we don't?
Excuse me. State your name, please.
Oh, sorry. I just told somebody else.
I know, I heard you say it.
Brian Seymour with Gunster on behalf of the applicant. We don't have a rendering of the south facade, but the architecture is consistent all the way around, so the rendering you saw from the front is the same on the back.
Is the same treatment of the facade?
Correct.
Okay.
Gene, any questions?
No questions.
Sam?
Can you pull up the, I guess, the parking plate? Was there the slide on the, I guess it wouldn't be on your slide. I guess, yeah, I guess of staff.
The applicant's presentation?
Is that a parking plate?
No, I mean, it's, no, in terms of your presentation, I have no questions.
Okay.
Sam, they can pull the applicant's slide. Is there something you want to see from it?
We could, we could do that.
I did want to see the last slide you had, just the, there we go. With the yellow writing.
Is that what you're?
Slide number 10.
Slide number 10.
10, okay. Sorry.
I was just reading what the conditions of the approval were.
This is a portion, that there's others there I could?
Yeah, my computer's not, it wasn't working, so I didn't get to read it. Okay, so these are, these are your, basically the conditions of approval that staff is recommending for all the variances?
Yes, PPRC panels, so it's different apartments.
Any other questions, Sam?
Okay, nope.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Now we're going to turn to the public. I have two cards. If anyone else wishes to be heard on this application, please be sure to complete a card and give it to the clerk. The two cards I have, one does not wish to speak, one does. The one who wishes to speak is Carol Isatheja. Please take the podium. The other person, Adam Tisker, I'll read what's written. "The development proposed with a right-of-way abandonment will jeopardize residents of Flagler Point and their health, as this is the third development going around the property with coastal impact in front." I'm sorry, I can't make out the words. Something being affected by all four sides, or now being affected by all four sides. All right, if you could please state your name?
Sure. My name is Carol Mead, and I live at Flagler Point. We have not had a formal review with the developer Savannah. What you have there is what I wrote. We actually received on August 12. It says July, but it was August 12, so only a week ago. We received the actual application and really haven't had time to have a review and voice any concerns with the development. and voice any concerns with the developer at this point. We're a 20-plus-year-old building built on limestone. This is now the third building that's going to be built around us, and I think it puts us at an extremely high risk. So we sit less than 500 feet from the property, and, you know, we're going to be surrounded with construction for approximately a decade. So we want to know how you're going to protect us. It says in there, we need protections from this construction and assurance that there'll be engineering studies, continual monitoring during and after construction to make sure there's no structural damage or issues going on. We need assurance that all the construction debris, dust, windows, you know, gardens, walkways, all the, I mean, we're, those two gardens buildings that are red, that are less than 500 yards are, are only three, three-story buildings. So all of that construction issues are going to go on top of those, and those are clay roofs, very susceptible to damage and issues. So we want to make sure that we are going to be made whole and there is no issues. We're also concerned about air control. We need assurance about continual noise and the vibrations that are going to be surrounding our building, and make sure that that's all taken into consideration. We also need assurance that there is an insurance protection put into place that benefits Flagler Point, that if there's, if there's an issue, we want it from onset of tear down all the way through the construction project. We have a question on the positioning of where all those utilities are. They're right next to Flagler Point. We want to know what the Planning Board is going to do to make sure that we're protected.
Thank you. Was anyone else wishes to be heard?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please come forward. Okay.
Hi. I hope you all voted today.
If you could please state your name for the record.
Oh, my name is Sally J. Higgins. I'm a resident of Flagler Point Apartment 722. Okay. I hope you all voted today, first of all. Second, I am ver, I have major concerns with this project, but also related to the Olara. That ground was cleared, I don't know, eight months, a year ago, I don't know, but it's sitting there. Nothing has been done. I am wondering if this new project, if the land will be cleared, and again, the land will be vacant, and I don't know what all the delays are, probably permitting, insurance, whatever, okay? So I also wanted to say that, as far as the letter, I didn't receive it until August 16th. If it was postmarked August 5th, I don't know where it's been between here and there. Alrighty then, here's what else. Now, I can't speak as eloquently as the attorneys, but I have a small issue, and I feel like Mr. Smith goes to Washington. All right. When all of those trees were removed from the Olaras, for the Olara site, all of those huge trees, the bees died. I wonder why I had bees coming to my balcony, and they were dying. Now I have really strange big bugs coming to my balcony, and it's all because they lost their habitat, all right? It's something to consider. Also, when I watched these trees being removed for the Olara site, I said, would you, I said, are they being saved to be replanted? They said, no. I wonder if the trees on Pine Street are going to be saved and replanted for the new project, this Savannah. Why aren't they being saved? I mean, save a lot of money, and they're gorgeous old banyans. I took pictures of one at 332 Pine. It's a huge banyan, and it's gorgeous. I would encourage everyone in this audience and the members of the Planning Board to drive down Pine Street and look at the beauty of the natural landscaping. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard? The applicant, I'll give a chance, if you wish to respond to some of the things you've heard, and then we'll take it back to the board.
Sure. Just a couple of things, again, for the record, Brian Seymour, and I'm the only lawyer, to be fair, John's eloquence is being a planner. So this is, yes, this is the third building. Yes, there probably will be more buildings. That was the City Commission's desire for CMUD. So that, and, and by the way, Ms. Mead very eloquently discussed that with the City Commission, I think with you all too, as it was going through the process, and those decisions were made. We are absolutely mindful of our neighbors, and we are happy to continue discussions about construction impacts relative to Olara, and the reason that it hasn't been going vertical yet is because we can't finalize the building permit until after tonight, and then after City Commission with the code change, because you can't put the elevator towers and the cooling towers within the allowed portion on the top of the roof. So that's your last item, I think it's the last item on the agenda tonight. And so that's why that has been happening. We sort of, as the building started getting taller, we started designing, and, well, we'll talk about that a little bit later, but that's what happened with the Lara and why it's sitting there. So that's your answer for that. I understand that there are concerns about all of the issues that are happening. This is, this does meet all of the code sections. The construction, absolutely, we need to work with. Mr. Scala, who is sitting here, I'm going to offer him up to Ms. Mead, and I think Ms. Mead has, we spoke during the meeting, the public meeting we had, that Ms. Mead was there, and Victor will be happy to continue that discussion. We will continue the meetings. Our, our goal is to be part of this neighborhood, obviously. Savannah is investing very heavily here, and we'll work with them. We'll continue to work with them through the course of construction. Your issues tonight are the code issues, and we do ask that those get approved and recommended to, obviously, we need that abandonment at the City Commission for that to go forward. So I think that covers everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll bring them back to the board now for discussion. First of all, first of all, okay. Let me, let's, let's go down the porn here and see what people's thoughts are. Sam, starting with you on this project. So. No, we really, we really have to be.
Approval are problematic.
I'm so sorry?
The conditions of approval don't have times on most of them. I forgot to mention the conditions of approval. John mentioned it in his presentation.
Right, right.
So if I, can I get just back, I know you went to the board, I don't know, Sam, procedurally, but can I just walk through?
I'm so, I'm so unclear. So this is something where you agree to the conditions, it's just a question of the timing of when those conditions are imposed?
There, there's one condition that's actually, was resolved during the process. If it's still there, I'm not going to argue about that, because it's already done anyway. But the conditions, John, can you pull up, but most of them, it's just finding the timing and making sure that we're clear about what the timing of them are?
And this is something you and staff have been unable to work out, because it's not the conditions, the timing of the conditions?
We got them Friday.
Yeah.
We went over them, looked at them, and then sent back a red line of them.
There's three slides.
So there's, there's, so you, so you can see what the timing that we proposed is. It, it really, and, and so if you look at number one, it just ties to before you have the issue to the engineering permit, you have to deal with those engineering conditions. The trees have to be related to the tree alteration permit in 2/4. I'm, I'm okay leaving 3/3, that was the one that's been resolved.
If you don't mind, let me bring up staff, and let's go through these one at a time, and to see whether they agree or not agree to these changes in the conditions.
Just to clarify, these, these conditions, the ones that they're proposing, that will be finalized during the site plan separately. We have a final site plan approval.
I'm so sorry, I'm not, I'm not saying, you're saying we don't need to address this now?
We have a final site plan approval letter that will be provided, which will be after the board meeting.
So you're saying there's still time for you guys to work this out?
Correct.
Is that satisfied to either of you?
Sure, I thought the vote was to adopt those conditions as written, but if that's not the case, then happy to, happy to work through it.
Is, is that, or Mr. Green, the question here is, what we're being asked to vote on? Are we asked to impose these conditions?
You're approving the project, but we have to do a formal site plan approval letter that addresses all the PPRC comments that are made.
So we don't need as part of our approval tonight to formally adopt these conditions?
We can work these out later. In, in our defense, we just got these this afternoon, so I haven't even looked at these yet.
Okay. Is that satisfactory to everyone? Good.
My apologies, I did not realize that. We got them Friday, we worked on them, we're doing, so this, I'm glad we don't have to worry about that now.
Okay. So we were just going through, let me just ask the general question. Does anyone have any concerns or objections to this project that we should discuss?
I think my, my primary concern was regarding the screening of the parking on the podium, but I appreciate the applicant bringing more specific details about that, and I think it alleviates my concerns in granting the variance relative to that. Certainly, no one wants to be staring at parked cars, but the other, the other requests seem fairly logical with respect to the plan presented.
Okay. So ultimately, you'll be supportive of it, then?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else is concerned about this? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for, go ahead, Jane?
I think I just have a general comment, probably geared towards the neighbor Flagler Point. They're the proverbial, or they, they're in a position to be the proverbial squeaky wheel, and so because there's so much development going on, you know, I would encourage them to try and maybe look for projects that they have.
Isn't that, I, I mean, I, I agree with the speaker when she said she has a right to look to the city for some protections. Ours is a very narrow silo. Ours deals with the code issues, not the construction issues. There are other departments that need to be responsive to your concerns. We don't monitor the construction.
Right, this was just a random thought. This was just my impression. I would just encourage Flagler Point to just work, be that neighbor with the developer, and then maybe see if, you know, they're willing to, you know, maybe enhance their property some and kind of work out those issues, but I'm definitely not speaking to conditions of approval for the board.
Because, because I agree that the way this is constructed could have an impact on that property, but that's not part of our jurisdiction.
Right.
Right, but the other people whose it is, and those are the people that you'll be in communication with, and I understand the contractor as well be in communication, so you're asking the right questions, maybe not to the right board. That's all I'm saying.
And not by any means am I saying that that's part of our analysis or anything like that. I'm just making a suggestion.
Fair enough. Any other general comments or specific concerns? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
Like a motion?
Motion? Thank you, sir. Now it becomes helpful. When I needed the helping other thing, we were like, let's talk to the applicant, but now I'm, two motions.
I move that the Planning Board grant, Planning Board Case Number 1976, a request by John Roach of Gunster on behalf of WPB Pine Acquisition for a Level 3 Special Review to construct a mixed-use development consisting of 367 units and 7,477 square feet of commercial uses within the Curry Mixed-Use District with variances from the city's zoning and land development regulations. This motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The Planning Board hereby makes findings of fact that the application complies with each of the application, excuse me, each of the applicable Special Review Standards found in Section 94-55B2 and 94-38D6 of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations.
Okay, we have a motion. Have we a second?
Well, second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. No, I think, didn't we decide we'd not have to impose conditions at this point? That's right.
That should be, what, 76A?
Some, some direction. I thought we just had concluded that we were not going to be dealing with the conditions with this vote. Is that not accurate?
All right.
So there's a portion to read only if the conditions are imposed and unmodified.
So you, forgive me, who was the original maker? You were the maker of the motion?
Yeah.
So if you can add that to it, and whoever's second will accept.
For 76, I'm reading the condition. But aren't the conditions going to be modified?
That says in addition to granting.
Says in addition.
Okay. Aren't they going to modify the conditions? Yeah, one second. All right. So I'm reading the modified or the unmodified?
So we're, we're trying to work through how this would work. If you put the conditions in, then how do we modify them to make sure the timing is done? And so Angela had a suggestion we're working through.
We're in the middle of a motion here, though, so respectfully, we'll.
I know, I'm just telling you what we're talking about.
I know, I hear. We'll get some guidance from legal counsel.
Unmodified.
If you could add to.
The motion.
Unmodified the requirement that staff work with the applicant in establishing the timing for the condition.
Okay. "In addition, the granting of this Level 3 Special Review is subject to the condition of approval contained in the staff report dated August 20, 2024. I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach. In addition, staff will work with the developer on the timeline of the modifications as listed in the staff report."
Okay, who was the one who made the second?
Andre.
I'm sorry, do you accept the modification to the motion?
I do.
Okay, so we have a modified motion, and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, passes unanimously. Now we have a second motion?
Yeah, let me find that. All right, so.
1976A.
"I move that the Planning Board recommend to the City Commission approval of Planning Board Case 1976A, a request by John Roach of Gunster on behalf of WPB Pine Acquisition for a right-of-way abandonment of 7,534 square feet parcel of an existing 15-foot-wide alley located east side of North Dixie Highway and south of Pine Street. This motion is based upon testimony presented at the hearing along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The Planning Board hereby makes finding of fact that the application complies with the applicable criteria in Section 78-217 of the city's Code of Ordinances." Am I adding modifications to this, too?
No, this is just the abandonment.
All right.
We have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you so much. That then brings us to co-revision case number 2401.
Good evening again. John Roach, Certified Land Planner for the Gunster Law Firm. Mr. Seymour took the punchline earlier, telling you what the next item was, so I'll go through here quickly. The case before is a proposed text amendment to increase the vertical height encroachment that's allowed for mechanical rooms, elevator overruns, and so forth within CMUD. As you know, and as presented in the previous item, CMUD was established in 2002 as a pedestrian-oriented mixed-use district. Among the provisions of CMUD is Table 7-1, which specifies the mechanical equipment and so forth are not allowed to extend more than 15 feet above the maximum height of the building. This amount of encroachment is the same regardless of whether you're in the edge sub-district, which allows 36-foot-tall buildings, so you could go an additional 15 feet, providing 51 overall feet, versus the Core 1A sub-district, which allows 350-foot-tall buildings, you're still only allowed 15 feet for mechanical equipment. You can see the, the height encroachment relative to the overall building height there is substantially different between those two sub-districts. 29% in the edge, 4% in the, in the Core 1A. This provision of the code, this 15-foot encroachment, did not change despite the increase in building heights that were implemented in 2001, which did establish the Core 1A sub-district and the substantially taller building heights that were allowed. Again, it's still limited to 15 feet. Again, it's still limited to 15 feet. The CMUD regulations are generally modeled after the downtown master plan, which does allow similar building heights, um, 308 feet within one of the districts. There's a table within the DMP regulations that is almost identical, however, allows mechanical rooms and equipment to encroach 20 feet above the maximum height. In the standard zoning districts within the city, it's a little bit different, so that you can go 10% above the building height, allowing for mechanical encroachment. So if you have a 300-foot-tall building within the standard zoning district, you can have 30 feet for your mechanical equipment. Um, however, CMUD is limited to 15. Included in your package was correspondence we received from distinguished elevator and mechanical design and inspection firms attesting to the fact that with the heights that are allowed within CMUD, this 15-foot allowance, uh, almost makes it impossible or very, very expensive to achieve that limitation. Truction elevators wouldn't be able to service the top floor. Cooling towers and their required structural, uh, supports couldn't fit within the 15-foot height limit. Some elevators would require some customization and, which may or may not be accepted by the supplier, and all of this adds substantial costs and/or prohibits the, the ability to comply. So we're proposing to amend the Table 7-1 to increase the height only within CMUD. The other mixed, uh, N-MUD district would not be changed. To increase CMUD to be consistent with what's allowed within the DMP, and that would be a 20-foot height encroachment. We feel like it's limited to mechanical height within CMUD. It's more consistent with the DMP and other provisions within the code. It won't impact use intensity, density, and so forth, and we believe that it complies with the necessary amendment standards. So we're asking for your support.
Just want five more feet?
Just five more feet.
Okay.
All right.
Any questions of the applicant?
I have no questions.
Any questions of staff? Staff, do you wish to come forward and be heard on this?
Here we go. Good evening. Linda Louis, principal planner for the record. So just to quickly summarize, um, this is a proposed text amendment to increase the maximum allowable height encroachment for mechanical rooms and equipment in the Curry Mixed Use District from 15 feet to 20 feet, so that is an increase in five feet. So as noted in the staff report, the height increase should have been looked at at the time the CMUD regulations were amended in 2021 to increase the incentive building height. However, that unfortunately was overlooked by staff, and it's only becoming an issue as, um, certain projects, such as the Olara project, are coming in for building permits. So just to summarize some of the key points in the analysis in staff report, the proposed text amendment is logical. Typically, taller buildings require larger or taller, taller mechanical equipment. The proposed, uh, height increase for mechanical equipment is negligible, does not impact the character or development pattern of CMUD. The proposed height encroachment is also consistent with the height encroachment standards for mechanical rooms and equipment in the downtown master plan area. So as detailed in the staff report, as well as the applicant had mentioned, uh, the DMP and CMUD regulations have similar building heights as well as development patterns. And finally, the applicant has provided support or expert letters from mechanical engineers and designs, design specialists that support the increase. And those letters have also been included in your planning board packet. So staff has found that the proposed text amendment complies with all eight amendment standards in Section 9432 of the Zoning and Land Development Regulations, which is also detailed in the staff report, and therefore, staff is recommending approval of code revision case 2401. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions of staff? Go ahead, Patrick.
I just have one question. Uh, do staff feel that 20 feet is sufficient? Should it be higher?
So it's, it's the same as the DMP. They have not come across any issues as of yet, so we believe that it is sufficient.
That thought had crossed my mind, too, as well, Pat. I'm glad you said something. We don't want to come back here if they need another three feet down the road, you know what I'm saying? Does anyone have any objections or, I should, excuse me, anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application or this code revision? And if not, does anyone have any concerns about giving extra five feet for the taller building?
I think it makes perfect sense.
Then I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Is there anything particular in the wording? Second?
I move that the planning board recommend to the city commission approval of code revision case number 2401, TC 24050002, a request by Brian Seymour, Esquire, and John Roach, P. Roach, AICP of Gunster on behalf of North Flagler Drive Developer LLC for a text amendment to Section 94-209, Mixed Use MU District Table VII-1, seven, is 7-1, projections and encroachments of the city's zoning and land development regulations to increase the maximum vertical height, vertical height encroachment for mechanical rooms and equipment from 15 feet to 20 feet within the Curry Mixed Use District CMUD. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The planning board hereby makes findings of fact that the application complies with the required standards in Section 94-32A of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations.
Okay, we have a motion. Have we a second? Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. That brings us to unfinished business, new business, old business. Anyone have anything more? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you.